Okay, great. Shall we go ahead and get started before Dolly gets here?
Did we lose her?
What?
So did we lose her? She was just here.
Was it something I said? Okay, well, welcome to the regular city council meeting for November the 5th, 2018. If you're here for something else, you're in the wrong place. Okay. Enough of my humor. If Ms. Gonzalez will take her seat, we'll go ahead and... Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hammerick.
Here.
Councilmember Haques. Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here. Is Pastor Tracy Swindler here? Good. Would you all please rise for the invocation?
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this tonight, Lord. We thank you for you to be here tonight, Father, and to give wisdom tonight for the city council. We ask that you continue to bless this city, Lord, bless this county, Lord, and we ask for your protection tonight, Lord, and good decision-making. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. We start out... If you'd like to speak to council, there are sheets back there that you could fill out and bring it to our clerk. I have two right now, and I would like to... And if there's something on the agenda, we'd like to kind of wait till we got to that point on the agenda. But this evening, we have Mr. Dennis Weed. Dennis, if you don't mind, would you approach the podium? I understand you're feeling a little under the weather, and maybe we can take advantage of you on that. Would you set the timer? Are we gonna do the timer thing? Okay, Dennis.
Thank you. Dennis Weed, 1375 Rudd. And there's three things on the agenda there towards the end that I really wanted to talk to, but I had knee surgery today, and it actually pretty much hurts. And so I just, I don't think I can stick around that long, so... But the first item that I wanted to just comment on was the water rate increase. That's a good idea. I think it's unfortunate that we have to have a water rate increase, but those are things that have to be done, so I think that's a good idea. The second item is, and I'll talk about this maybe in reference to this a little bit more, the third thing to talk about, but is certificates of participation. Philosophically, I'm really opposed to certificates of participation. I've said many times, it's just a left-handed way of getting around. Citizens vote on a revenue issue, and I'm a firm believer that you should put it to a vote of the citizens, and if it passes, great. If it doesn't, and it's really, truly a life and death, or crisis, or emergency situation, bite the political bullet and then do the certificate of participation. But so... But it's on the agenda. I don't see anything wrong with approving it this evening, but not going forward with it yet. And then that ties into the third thing I've got to say, which is the stormwater fee increase that's being proposed, a 45% increase. And while I was on council, I talked about this, and I've got some ideas. I'm not gonna be able to share them this evening, but there's got to be a better way to do it than the way you're doing it now, which is based solely on impervious surface. And the reason I say that is businesses are just flat getting hammered. And this is just one more whack on the head that businesses are taking. And if you stop and look at it, thanks to the Gallagher Amendment, businesses pay 55% of our property taxes, okay? So businesses have an effective four times as high... We pay four times as much... And I own residential properties here, too, so I'm on both sides of this, but businesses pay four times the taxes for the same price piece of property that a residence does, okay? So... And then on the stormwater, well, and then on our budget, the city budget is primarily sales tax-driven. Businesses generate... Harry would have the exact number, but I think it's somewhere between maybe 60 and 70% of our total general fund revenue is the result of sales tax, which, guess where the sales tax comes from? Businesses generate that sales tax. And then the final thing is, there are, in round numbers, about 6,000 residential properties in the city of... City limits of Canyon City. There's about 700 business properties. There's roughly eight times as many residential properties as there is business properties, yet the business properties pay essentially the same amount as the residential properties do in stormwater fees. So businesses are paying 55% of the property taxes at four times the residential rate. They raise 70% of the general fund revenue in the city. We pay eight times as much in stormwater fees. That's not right. It's broken. There's better ways to do it, and I have some really good ideas. So what I would like to say is, this stormwater problem has existed for decades and decades, and we all know it's a problem. And I'm asking you, please, you don't have to solve it tonight. Put it off and just postpone it for one more meeting. I'll feel better, and I think it'll give us a chance to talk about maybe some better ways to more equitably distribute that stormwater fee. But like I said, I feel fairly strongly about it, that just dumping one more load on businesses is just not right. And sorry it went over, and thanks for the time.
Well, thank you, Dennis. I hope you heal.
Yeah.
You can, you know, you were on council with me and everything else. If you want to submit those in writing, whatever. This is... We agonize over this stuff because we know that it has been kicked down the road. You know that.
I know.
For many, 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 many years, and the council has to do, bite the bullet. It's like trying to catch a bullet with your teeth.
Yeah.
It's not fun. And I would... You know that. I'm not...
Oh, no. And I mean, you know, mostly know.
It's tough.
Sometimes you gotta do things that really aren't popular.
Yes. And I would like to see if you can type them out or get ahold of me. We'll take a look at it.
Sure.
I think it's a lot of stuff we've heard before, but I'm up for it.
Okay.
Okay?
Dennis, I also want to wish you well and that you heal well from your surgery. And in those special discussions, remember, because we've talked about some of these solutions, too, that there's some legality problems, too, with flat rates and things like that, that could have taper problems as well.
Yeah. I mean, I'm pretty familiar with all those arguments, and... But, I mean, stormwater affects everybody and not businesses eight times as much as residences. And truthfully, I think way more residents flood than businesses.
Thank you, Dennis.
Oh, yeah. I'm interested in hearing that, too.
Okay. So there you go.
All right. Thanks.
The late Mrs. Gonzalez will go there, too.
Oh, hey, and just one last thing. I have two of my brothers that came from Wisconsin just to be here tonight.
Wow.
No, not really, but...
Thank you, Dennis. I hope that heals up, so... All right. We're at the time in the agenda where council members would have any comments. Would you... Ms. Turner, would you like to start comments?
Sure. On Saturday, I attended the Lowe's and Vicious Walk for Homeless Awareness, so I wanted to thank them for putting on that program. I found it very educational, and I know we're gonna be talking about homelessness on Wednesday, and unfortunately, I won't be here, so maybe you can consider my attendance on Saturday in lieu of my attendance on Wednesday.
Did you say luau?
Luau.
I'm sorry.
I said in lieu of.
Oh, lieu of, okay. I'm not gonna give anything up here, so...
But I do have Hawaii on the brain.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, you do. Lucky, lucky person. Mr. Meisner, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Caitlin, before you go, I don't know if you'd have time, even if you're at the airport. I'd like to know a little bit of your feelings about the homelessness issues and some of the topics we're discussing as we go into that conversation on Wednesday, so we can be respectful of, you know, where you'd like to see things move, where your priorities are.
Maybe while I'm waiting at the airport, then I'll have some time.
But then, once you get the plane, I don't want to hear from you. You need to go have fun.
Okay. That's a deal.
Okay. Or on the beach. Mr. Meisner? Anything? You don't have anything to say? Okay. Oh, I'm shocked here. Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the Atmos Public Meeting. They had it. It was kind of a brief, a public meeting and a briefing for elected officials. It was early last week, and it was a luncheon. It was very nice that they did. And they are at the front end of making major capital improvements to replace older gas lines that are in the city. And there, the idea behind the luncheon was to establish communication with elected leaders to be able to make sure that our shared mutual interests are discussed and fully understood by both sides as they go forward with this capital improvement project. But they... It looks like now they're not gonna start in 2019, but 2020. But it's the first, it's the first step in communication and letting us as leaders know what they're gonna be doing, and them being able to interface with our city staff to make sure that they do things the proper way.
Do you think coordinating with our streets that we're gonna be dealing with 2A money? Do you think we'll have to go back over streets we've already done? Okay. We'll move on.
I won't speak.
We don't know.
I don't know.
Well, that comes later. All right. Ms. Smith? Ms. Cochran?
Just that we have homelessness.
On Wednesday, yeah. Four o'clock here. And Ms. Gonzalez?
The radio program on Wednesday morning.
Yeah, 8:30?
8:30. Also, I attended Victims Advocate Forum last week sometime. Can't remember the day.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Where victims were... Well, it was held by the Police Department, Sheriff Department, Fremont County Sheriff Department, Custer County Sheriff Department. The DA's were there. And it was just a good way for victims to learn of resources in our community so that they could reach out for help. Also, to let them know that there's help out there for them. So it was very interesting.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Haques?
It's coming up this coming weekend in here. We're gonna have Veterans Day. There'll be some activities going on within the city with regards to Veterans Day. And we have a lot, a lot of veterans that live here in Canyon City and in Fremont County, okay? So if you know a veteran, you know, be sure to tell them thanks, give them a handshake, pat them on the back and everything else, because, you know, if it weren't for all of those people who did their time and served and everything else, we wouldn't have the great country that we have now. So thank a veteran, okay?
Thank you, Frank. And I had the pleasure of two weekends, a Halloween weekend, of three, judging three contests of munchkins with masks looking for candy. And I had nightmares over that. It was amazing. Did it here in town twice, and then up at the dinosaur experience, and that was great. And then this weekend, I was at the cemetery for the Veterans Day celebration at the old Greenwood Cemetery. And two years ago, right when the cemetery, when the celebration was over, four A-10 Warthogs flew over, and I, of course, since I was in the Air Force, I took credit for that. But no, I'm just kidding. That was amazing. And this year, after the ceremony was over, we're walking out, a bald eagle flies over. That's just amazing. Just a beautiful animal, so we did that. And anyone else? Mr. Meisner, finally.
I do have a comment. The, in our retreat, we changed the format. I'm gonna call it the format. We're trying to make the meetings that are off council a little more inviting and less intimidating. What you'll see at those meetings, as I understand it, is we will be meeting down on this lower level, you know, with the tables in a U formation that will allow staff a little better involvement and kind of put us at a different level. So you'll see a change in that format starting Wednesday, I think.
Thanks for mentioning that. I forgot about that. Okay. Let's move on to number five, which is recognition and presentations. Adam Gonzalez, is Adam here? There he is. Sure. I saw you there, Adam. Would you come up to the podium, the library, in the Canyon City Public Library? Adam has been awarded the Colorado Libraries for Early Literacy Hero Award, C-L-E-L Hero Award, and the support of early literacy in the state of Colorado. Adam, would you like to make a comment on that? Well, congratulations.
Thank you. It was just an honor to receive recognition for, for the work that I've done. I'm very humbled by the award. Thank you.
How long you been with us at the library?
October, May, 11 years for me.
11 years. Wow. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. We'd like to go ahead. I have a certificate for you, and I'm wondering if the council would adjourn down, not adjourn, sorry, don't say, I'm sorry, move down front here. We got a picture. I'll present this award to Adam. And another really great organization for our community, and I mean that sincerely. This is a great bunch of people. I'd like to invite up the Fremont FAR, Fremont Adventure Recreation. FAR has received the Local Leadership Award, which is given to individuals or organizations dedicated to creating a better community through trails. FAR is the first recipient of this award. So come on up. So who's... Ashley, are you the spokesman for the group, or is it... No? Oh, that's right.
I'd just like to say thanks for this recognition. We have worked really hard for a long time, and it's cool to receive an award like this. But I'd say most of us really are kind of humble, and although we like this award, we really just think it's cool. All the good things are happening in town, so thanks.
And this is the first time this was awarded?
Yeah, this is the first award from the International Mountain Bike Association for local leadership.
I hear so many great things about our trails. I walk them. Being a little on a mountain bike is a little scary to me, but you do such a great job. Appreciate it. It's all volunteer. And that's wonderful for a town like this, because we're getting notoriety from those trails, and that, of course, brings people here. We like that a lot. So again, congratulations. Anybody else like to comment?
Brian and I have known each other for a couple of years, but, I mean, the thing that really impresses me about FAR is this is a group of people that they don't talk it, they do it. I mean, you people go out there, you get the funds, and you get things done. And I really appreciate that for an organization, for just going out there and getting things done. Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that I really appreciate that. I think you guys are really responsible for transforming Canyon City and branding us as a tourist destination. And I think that the changes that are happening in our community are, in fact, I think were initiated somewhat by FAR in that we're gonna see that grow to fruition further and further throughout the years. So we really appreciate it, and thank you. And I'm always excited as a council member to support FAR and the efforts that you're doing, because I know that they will be successful. You guys are a class act. Thank you for bringing honor to Canyon City.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Do we want to take a picture up front here with the FAR?
Up or lower? How are we doing?
Oh, we'll stand up here, and you'll come down here, because you outnumber us, I think.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Did you get snappy jackets? Okay.
I know.
Wow. Those are great jackets.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, let's move on to the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. Can the city administrator review the consent agenda, please?
Mayor and city council, 8A would be approval of minutes for a special city council meeting of October 1st. There were two of them at 10:05 a.m. and at 5:00 p.m., so you were busy that day. October 5th, 2018, October 8th, 2018, October 9th, 2018, October 12th, 2018, October 23rd of 2018, and October 24th of 2018. So if anyone wants to ask whether the council is busy, this is proof of the pudding. 8B would be ratification of the soccer field agreement. You must recently authorize with the Canyon City Youth Soccer Association, allowing them to receive field improvement grants of $17,000 from the Colorado Soccer Association. The proposed change is changing the term from a one-year agreement to a five-year agreement, and therefore, that would qualify for them to receive this extra money. Otherwise, they'd have only gotten $3,500. So well worth it. 8C would be approval. Again, this was a matter you approved on May 22nd, but there were some small revisions to this battle memo of understanding, which is effectively a statewide agency and a grant process. We recently received our fingerprint identification program through, so we want to maintain that. This would authorize signature future renewals of the MOU by myself, not to incur any financial responsibility after review by the city attorney. So effectively, it is a reflection of what you already have approved, but there were some changes after your approval, and that's why this amended MOU is required. 8D would approve the mayor's signature on a $600,000 Environmental Protection Agency grant for brownfield assessment cleanup. This is in partnership with Fremont County, City of Florence. We also want to recognize it was the Fremont Economic Development entity that received these grant dollars. Now they're being coordinated through the county to hopefully clean up sites within both the county and the city and in Florence.
Just a question, and I know I probably asked this before. Do we have time to designate, or do we already know what we're designated for the use of that money?
Well, the process, I'll have Ryan talk to you about that, because clearly, there are many candidates for assessment cleanup, but he can talk to you about that process.
So we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask the expert, right?
There's be a panel.
As of right now, no sites have been designated, so the coalition from, with representatives from each of those entities will be meeting over the next several months to identify sites and work on that. But I'd certainly be happy to take forward council's priority list.
And I think a lot of people may not know what a brownfield assessment is. Could you just quickly run over that and maybe what it could be used for?
Yeah. So the assessment grants can be used for Phase 1 or Phase 2 environmental studies. It can also be used for planning, you know, of the cleanup and potential plans for future use of those sites as well.
Okay. Any questions, Ryan? Ms. Gonzalez?
Ryan, what would be an example in our community of a brownfield site?
So any old gas station would be an example. You could look at properties that have asbestos, just determining how much environmental impact a particular property might have on the local community.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hammerick?
Thank you. The, has the first meeting occurred of the entities?
We had a preliminary meeting to kind of go through the process and talk about the IGA and what the process was going forward. We actually have our first official meeting scheduled, I believe, December 6th.
Are you our representative to that group?
I am.
The, will council receive, there's required quarterly reports to EPA, progress reports. Will council, as a routine matter, receive those reports?
We can absolutely do that.
And that can either be through, you know, information in our packets or through the, our administrators' weekly briefings.
Absolutely.
But seeing those would be really great. And I have one further question. Does our network meet the cybersecurity requirements that EPA is gonna impose?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that offhand.
That, because there's a lot of language in the agreement about cybersecurity and what type of network you have to have before you can connect with EPA to share some of this information, as I understand.
Yeah. And honestly, I don't know, because the county's taking the lead, so it'd actually be the county's network, so I don't know offhand about that.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay. So, all right. So maybe the question is, is will our network gonna be talking to theirs, or it'll just be all through the county?
It should all go through the county.
Through the county. But one thing we'd like to offer, and I'm glad you've raised the point, is to have any council member, particularly John, given his strong background in environmental issues, to attend these meetings with Ryan. I mean, that level expertise would be a great asset for us. You think you'd be able to make it? Go ahead.
Yes. I think I could.
Okay.
So we'll send you the schedule.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And on the battle agreement, the, I did have some questions that I was able to ask Chief Harvey, who's not able to be here tonight. And my question to him was, does rural Colorado benefit from this type of agreement? Because it, in the agreement, this is really run by the Colorado State Patrol, which is fine, but it's run out of Denver. And my question was, does rural Colorado benefit? And the answer was yes. Pueblo is number three in car thefts in the nation.
Yeah.
In the nation. And that, this is an agreement that has been executed. The city has participated, and some of our stolen cars have been recovered in Pueblo. Some of their stolen cars have been recovered here because of, because of this agreement. I also asked how many members of the police department would be designated to this battle as a member of the battle group. And the chief said there's no designation. It's a case-by-case basis, depending on what's going on, who may be assigned on a temporary basis. This is all, so far, for the police, our police department, this has all been overtime, which is reimbursed.
Yeah.
So that was, to me, that was a really important thing. In addition, that's another information sharing request. There's a quarterly meeting with the battle commander where they talk about the incidents that have happened. And I asked the chief if he could share that with council at a high level. We're not interested in specific, you know, investigations, but numbers of investigations, vehicles recovered, or something like that would be good, I think, for us as a council to know. And then I did have a question for our turn.
Yes.
And the, this says, in here under the liability section, it says, "Participating agencies and individual battle members agree they will not be responsible or liable for acts performed by the personnel of other member agencies performing battle activities." And aren't... And, and aren't those really just feel-good words? I mean, the, the, there's, that, that clause in there really doesn't restrict liability of the individual members, does it?
No, it can. It can be used in a court of law. Yeah, as, 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 as a provision that the parties relied upon when they entered in. That was their understanding when they entered into the contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've had similar language in the past, for example, on Drug Task Force. And we have already benefited, mentioned with a license plate reader, and we're utilizing that. And that's a great tool for capturing stolen vehicles. Yeah.
Ms. Turner?
Oh, do you want to?
Ms. Meisner? Want to argue about it or?
Well, we both put our hand up.
Okay. It was a tie.
Can't argue with her.
He knows better. Well, something that Mr. Hammack said just made me, made me think about something. Could we ask the chief to let us know numbers on whether, if we, when we do an investigation, whether they're being picked up by our DA for prosecution?
Okay.
I'd be interested to know if we're going to commit time to this type of program. Is it going to be fruitful for us in getting these people off our streets?
Good point. Thank you. Wasn't there something in here about prosecutorial authority?
There is, and it's case-by-case. So, I'm curious to know, on a case-by-case basis, how many are they picking up and how many are they declining?
We'll track that and report that back to you. John suggests on a quarterly basis.
Okay. Ms. Meisner?
Our, our license plate reader, was that purchased through city funds or provided through battle?
By, through battle.
So, if we were not part of this agreement, we would have to return that. Is that not correct?
Yes. Yes, yes. I think that was about a $7,000 value, if I recall the cost of those systems.
Mr. Arquez?
If the chief is listening, if not, someone will get it to him with regard to the deal with the auto thefts and stuff like that. I used to be with the auto theft division when I was on the State Patrol. My recommendation to the chief is assign one person and just leave that one person alone. Don't rotate it out. Because if you're going to do this job, it makes it worthwhile and can get the job done, you can't keep changing people out. Because there's a lot to be involved when you look at auto theft, the way that they'll have it set up and that. So, that would be my recommendation. Pick one officer who you think is the best qualified, and just keep that officer on that assignment. And, and don't rotate it out.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Anyone else? Ms. Smith?
Well, one, John, thank you for looking into that further and for the report to council. I appreciate that. I would just like to thank Rex Brady from the Parks Department and Lydia Bill from Canyon City Soccer Association and the city council for working together to get the grant to improve the field at Mountain View. I really appreciate you guys ratifying the agreement to accommodate them to increase that grant to seventeen, over $17,000. And just want to publicly thank them for the work they did to help save taxpayer money and make some improvements for our kids at Mountain View.
Thank you. Good. Yes, and just to piggyback on that, at the cemetery Saturday, our Parks Department had that looking so good. That's the best I've ever seen, the roads, the whole thing. And many of the people that were there commented on how well that was done. So, we really, really appreciate that. It was, if you go up there, you ought to see it. It's, it's truly a, a great job. So. Oh, okay. Ms. Cochran?
I had a question regarding the minutes for the meeting on October 5th, which was awarding the money. So, and maybe Jim, John, or Ashley can help me with this. But F, UAA COG had start, there was an $800 defibrillator, and I believe we had said that there's lots of grants available for that and that we weren't going to be funding that. But it is listed on there as something we're funding. And when you look at the breakdown of every, but everything that we were funding, it doesn't listed as funded, but in the required use of funds column, it's listed. So, there's some conflicting. And I
Yeah, I remember. We, we did not approve that.
Yeah.
That's right. And I, and I, Amanda and I had had some conversation about this, and I had requested some follow-up. And I apologize for not following up more on that, but I didn't get any feedback from anybody that was at the meeting. So, I left it as it was.
I apologize.
Don't let it happen again.
Okay.
So, I think that needs to be amended to not include that $800 to whoever needs that information.
Yeah, it was on the community funding committee.
Correct.
That Friday. Okay. Are we ready to make a motion? Going to ask someone to make it with that, I guess, caveat in there. Ms. Turner?
I move that we adopt the agenda and consent agenda as amended by Councilwoman Cochran.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
Second.
Second, Ms. Arquez. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion?
Harry, have you sent out anything to those people yet?
Which one? What is that?
Have you sent out any information to, in any particular, to COG?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, I'm not, I don't remember doing this before. We're going to open up the public hearing to consider, it's a public hearing, a public hearing to consider special use of 400 A and B Barrett Avenue for a childcare center in the R2 Zone, case number SRU 2018-1. This matter was continued from September 4th, 2018. Applicant has withdrawn. So, we'll have to reopen the public hearing and then call for a motion to accept, to accept the withdrawal of this special use review application. So, does everybody understand what I just said?
Yes. So, I, I just have a question about it.
Yes, ma'am.
She withdrew because of the remodel costs. Is that what I'm understanding?
Tony, do you have anything about that?
Feedback, I, just a change in the business plans. I don't know exactly what changed, but that was her rationale. Some change in the business plan.
Okay. So, she didn't really go into detail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not to, sorry. Go, go ahead.
No, I may ask for some direction, not that, what do we need to do? It says we don't need to take any action, but he's suggesting we do and we
No, you don't need to take any action. The application is withdrawn. That's the applicant's choice.
Okay. With my understanding, we had to do a motion to withdraw. We don't have to do that, do we?
No, you don't have to do that.
Okay. Let's go. All right. Thank you.
Number 10.
Number 10. This is, this is the discussion. It's number 8. It's consideration of financing through certificates of participation, COPs, and adoption by title only of Resolution 11, Services 200, 2018, entitled Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Providing Authorization and Direction to City Staff to Proceed with the Process of Obtaining Financing Through Certificates of Participation to Fund the Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan and Specific Stormwater Projects. Could I have a, do you have something, Tony, that you'd like to talk about this time?
Just that this would trigger the necessary steps to achieve the council's wish to issue these certificates of participation for funding of up to $8 million with the stormwater projects. Essentially, this would allow us to retain bond councils, very specialized area, financial consultants, underwriters that would work with Harry. This matter would probably be brought back to you late January, early February, before we actually issued the debt.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Going back some time, at some meeting regarding water rates or stormwater rates and future increases, I had suggested that we set a schedule for the next three to five years, and was told we couldn't do that. I don't want to go back and find the recording, but I see here that we're talking about actually setting in rates for the next five years, which I understand the table we talked about.
Does that conversation change when it says COP, though?
No, this isn't a COP. The rates are in ordinance.
Do you, I do recall you made that recommendation.
And do you recall being told that we couldn't do that?
No, I don't recall that we couldn't do it, just that that would be the prerogative of every council. So, you could establish future rates, but future councils could reverse that decision. That was the problem. But you could certainly still do it. Well.
This, this doesn't establish rates.
No.
It just says the council will need to increase. It doesn't say it shall or it is increased and enforced.
But I think we, in a previous discussion, we laid out a proposed schedule. The big rate increase would be, of course, this year, but there would be smaller rate increases that would be required to fulfill the financial principal interest, debt service for these COPs. That's really the prerogative of the council. If you wanted to establish, you know, a two- or three-year commitment to rate increase, you can certainly do that. But we're also letting you know that, you know, with future elections and future councils, they can reverse that decision. It's not binding.
Well, at this, at this, Mr. Arquez?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. But we're talking stormwater here. The next topic we're talking about will be water rates. So, do you want to?
It's a concept.
Yes, concept.
I, I think the, the issue is, is that fees are set based upon the costs of the service, right? And part of the cost of the service is through your budgeting process, which is done every year. So, even if you were to set them out five years or three years or whatever, the next council, even if they agreed, would have to consider whether those rates are right. So, I'm not really sure you're doing anything by setting them out, other than making a commitment to do so. So.
I think your intent, which I think was appropriate, was telegraphing to the public that there would be a series of necessary rate increases, and so there shouldn't be a surprise. You're trying to be transparent that, you know, to meet our obligations, whether it be the water fund or the stormwater fund, we should telegram to the public, they will require rate increases to keep pace with particularly our capital needs in both those funds. That that has been a problem in the past. I think that's what initially triggered your concerns, because we'd gone almost 10 years since we increased the water rates. And as a result, we haven't kept pace with our capital needs. And I think it was a good visionary idea. But again, if the council could continue and do that, subject to knowing that it can be changed or modified by future councils.
I remember that conversation that we've had several times. It's true. I mean, if the next council comes on, doesn't like them, they can change them and get rid of it altogether. So, I do believe on the other part, though, it does, it does say, look, we're going to have to start putting money away for capital improvements and just look forward to this. So, is that satisfactory or not?
I just point out two differences in philosophies. That's all I was doing.
Okay. Mike, Mike Kramowski, you wanted to talk, this is stormwater now. Why don't you come up and you want to talk about stormwater? This is the appropriate time.
Name is Mike Kramowski. I live at 463 Green Horn up in Dawson Ranch. I just wanted to come down tonight and, and compliment the council for its momentum on this, on this bond going forward. COPs, I think they are. I also respect what Dennis said earlier tonight about a possible way of recalculating the rates so that they don't impact the businesses as badly. I think it would be a real good idea for the council group to consider that. And then I sure hope we don't lose momentum on those COPs, because there's a lot of work to be done.
There is. Thanks. Mike, any questions? Mike?
Mike, I just might give you and the HOA a heads up that we will be looking forward to having residents participate from each district in helping to find and prioritize projects that could be done with the $8 million. And we'll probably be asking the HOA if they can have a representative on that team.
Yeah, that came up Friday at our board meeting. We are very willing and eager to participate.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Mayor? Ms. Arquez?
You know, I have faith in our, in our newspaper, but I think it's important when you print your article with regards to what we're doing with these rate increases and that, that there's something in there that says this is just, in a sense, right now, but there's no guarantee that it's going to continue for the five years. Because another group of council members can look at it, and if they want to make adjustments to it, they have the opportunity to do that. This way, people know that, you know, even though we're saying five years, that doesn't mean it actually has to be five years, okay? So, I just, you know, want the public to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All right. Any other questions or comments? I call for a motion then. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, for council to understand, the current resolution has nothing to do with rates.
Yeah.
No.
All we're talking about is a COP.
This is a COP.
Right. I think my only comment is that this is a 50-year-old problem. We've heard resident after resident and business owner after business owner come to talk to us. We've also had many former mayors and council members talk about the problems that they've had trying to address stormwater. But none of them have adequately funded to get anything, any projects to actually be done. And what we're doing today is taking the leadership to actually get some projects done now to show some results and to show our, our city that we are, we are going to take this seriously and do the basic needs of meeting the basic needs of our city and getting, and alleviating the flooding for businesses and our residents. And we're going to see those results next year.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Yeah, it's, I said this many times, it's an agonizing thing. This group sits down and, and goes through, and I appreciate all of your comments. And we have. We've, we've put this over, and we've got to do something. I've been here in business for about 45 years, 10 years between planning commission and this. Got to bite the bullet. And this is, something has to do. And I know how all of you have gone through some tough times and thinks, thoughts about it, and I appreciate that. So, I'd have to ask for a motion at this time.
Can I just say one last thing?
Yes, ma'am.
This really seems to be our only solution at this point, because really, nobody has come forward with a better one. But I would just like to stress again, you know, my concern with paying this off as quickly as possible. And, and if we can not have it stretch the 20 years, when we only get three years' worth of actual construction projects being completed. And I think that's a good, kind of a good faith gesture towards our citizens that, you know, we do want these projects completed, but I don't necessarily want to see them continue to pay for it in 20 years when no more projects are being completed. So, that's really just all I kind of wanted to stress is, is the importance that I feel that we make the best effort to pay this off as quickly as possible.
Yeah. Ms. Meisner?
Well, just to clarify, this is not the only option that's available.
No.
We have an option on the table that is pay-as-you-go, which is not nearly as attractive, but, but that is a viable option.
A small viable option.
Yes.
Very progressive.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt by title only, Resolution Number 11, Series of 2018.
Second?
Second. Ms. Gonzalez, second. Thank you. Any discussions on the motion? Hearing and signing. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Count, Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is number nine, Consideration Municipal Code Update pertaining to amended water rate schedules, Ordinance 29, Series 2018, for introduction and first reading by title only entitled, In ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, amending certain water rate schedules set forth in the city's water code relative to water service provided by the City of Canyon City Water Department, a water activity enterprise. Would you have any comments, Mr. Administrator?
Other than probably calling this the Jim Meisner Memorial Act, we appreciate his forward thinking and recognizing, as I mentioned before, when we had a 9% increase in water rates last year, that was really the first increase in almost a decade. We're much better off with the small incremental increases, not only to address operational and capital needs, but it's also easier on the pocketbooks of our residents and rate payers when they're smaller versus larger, longer-term increases. So, what this would enable us to do is, is across-the-board 3% increase in our water rate cost for operational and capital needs in, particularly next year, but also for the foreseeable future. But I think these annual type of adjustments are exactly what is appropriate.
Thank you, Tony.
And the impact, just to make it clear to the public, our typical residential user uses between 8,000 and 10,000 gallons per month. So, if it was based on $10,000 per month, the average increase would be 99 cents per So if it was based on $10,000 per month, the average increase would be 99 cents per month, so less than $12 a year.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I was just wondering if Bob Hartsman, if he wanted to make any comments to City Council.
Didn't want to.
I haven't heard from Bob in a while.
Yeah.
He sat this whole time. Let him talk.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Bob Hartsman, Water Superintendent. Some of you may recall that we had Raftellus, a consultant, do an analysis not only on our water, but our stormwater rates. And out of that process came some hard truths, and those were that we do have a backlog of projects in the water fund, just as we do in the stormwater fund. You know, we've, we've got miles and miles of pipe that is undersized, that is serving beyond its real useful life. We have aged infrastructure in some of our, many of our facilities that when you need to upgrade that kind of stuff, there's really nothing inexpensive about it. And then we've got some bigger, long-term projects, especially around the raw water facilities and stuff, that, that we need to keep up pace with, because if you fall behind the curve on these things, it's a monumental task, looking upward, to try to think, how am I going to do this? So it is a positive step. I know no one likes rate increases. However, in, in this day of age, you, you need to be able to keep up with your infrastructure, like I say, especially in regards to our drinking water. Not that stormwater's not important as well, but our drinking water touches each and every one of us every day, every day. And for us to continually supply, an un-irruptible supply, as well as a quality supply, takes money. And I applaud you for taking on this. I had, this is just my opinion, I had my doubts whether or not we would see any increase this year, or for 2019, based upon the increase we had to do this year, because it was a tough one. But we need to look at doing this every year to, like I say, stay ahead of the curve, because our drinking water, it's what supports our community. And if we don't have a good, reliable supply, then your, a lot of other factors come into play that you see you lose, so. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about infrastructure or anything in general, but...
Ms. Smith?
Bob, thank you for your comments and being here tonight.
Sure.
And how, another factor on the increase in cost to the water department also is the streets that are getting built as well. Is that not right? I mean, there's new water mains that need to be, if we're going to tear up a street, we might as well fix the water mains that are...
Very prudent to do so. I, I can tell you that in my time here, we've gotten more than one black eye when, in years past, we've gone in and recon the road. 1000 Block of Monroe is a good example. Built a brand-new street over an older water main, and that street is now kind of checkerboarded, because we've been up there several times working on water main repairs. And, you know, the 2A is just part of what we need these additional dollars for. So the, the 2A drives a lot of stuff as far as where we're looking at. The, the list that we have this year, I believe you've all, Engineer Lancaster shared that with you. I don't think we're going to be able to do water main in all of it, so it's, choices are going to have to be made. But the, the 2A is a factor in the, in how it, like I say, accelerates the need for the infrastructure upgrade.
All right. And I also think it's prudent to reiterate to the public, because we get caught, I still get comments all the time, that they feel, some people think that their taxpayer money is paying for the water, and that is not the case.
Right. No. Being an enterprise fund, the water department receives all of its revenue, and Harry can correct me if I'm wrong, from the sale of a product, our drinking water, as well as our TAP fees. That's what sustains the water fund, so.
So the water, what we pay to the water fund, it won't, that, all that, 100% of that money goes towards providing clean water that comes out of your TAP?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Well, not that I want to take credit, that's not my intent, but my concern with the proposed budget is that I didn't see a rate increase for water, and relative to the heartache that we went through, to make the initial change last year, didn't make any sense for, from my viewpoint, for us to take a step backward, at least the minimal amount of, relative to the inflationary amount. And that was my suggestion, is that that water rate increase should at least reflect an inflationary increase, so that we're not losing ground. And, and as we all know, those, we just need to continue to do small, minor adjustments to, to keep up.
Correct. But again, you know, again, we've got a backlog in projects. I mean, got well over, you know, $23 million in, in projects that need to get done, and, you know, it, every little bit helps, but somewhere along the line, we're going to have to come across with another larger increase.
So you said $20 to $30 million of backlog?
Mm-hmm.
In the water fund. About $75 million plus in the stormwater fund.
I'd be interested in overall the backlog of projects we have and what that ticket price is, if you include streets, water, stormwater, everything?
Streets is over, over 100 million.
No, over 160 something.
I can put that together for you. Oh, yeah, we're, we're approaching 200 million easily.
I don't want to hear that.
Well, it's important to have those numbers, though, because it demonstrates why these...
Well, we, we've gone through with governance in past years to nine years, 10 years, no rate increase, the cost of pipes, the cost of labor, the cost of everything went up, cost of electricity to pump it, and didn't ask for an increase. I wouldn't do that in my company, period.
Sure.
We, we have to be realistic to what's going on, and we haven't done. We didn't do it on the street. We didn't do it on the water. And then we truly agonize over these, but it has, you have to do it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, again, those were some of the hard truths that we learned with Raftellus, that, you know, you've got to, you've got to be able to throw some money at these larger infrastructure projects, because every day we let it pass and not do anything, it's just doing nothing but getting more expensive.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Hi, Bob. Thanks for being here.
You bet.
So the water main break that happened in the city market parking lot this summer?
Yes. That was a good one.
That was an example of some, some infrastructure that needed to be repaired sooner than it was.
Yep. We had a cast iron water main and corrosion. The pits had formed in it, and finally gets to a point where it softens it up enough that the, the pipe itself can no longer contain it, and it, they burst through the corrosion, which is basically rust.
Yeah, I saw it burst. It was pretty intense. How much did that cost to repair?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I can certainly look that up.
Okay.
I mean, it's...
Just, just to give our, our community a sense of, of what this, what these kind of projects cost and what happens when, when we don't...
To make an educated guess, I would have to say that, not accounting for the water that we lost, the, the leak repair itself, labor, equipment, materials, somewhere maybe between $5,000 to $7,000.
Yeah.
Without fault restoration.
And then it also could have been, it could have really caused a lot of damage to people's vehicles or, or even to people in general.
My understanding was, we did have some damage to vehicles.
Really?
Yes.
Well, I, I had planned a trip to Yosemite, and I had to cancel it. I didn't, I, I got to see old faithful.
Okay. We need to move, that's a, thank you. Insight there. Anyone else like to comment on this?
Yeah, that was a mayor joke.
We're planning our big splash pad in that parking lot.
I can't even...
No, I just, I wanted to give the community...
Wait a minute. This is not, okay. All right. Anyone else?
It was bad. I was, I watched it.
Now I'm going to ask for a motion. Mr. Meisner?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move that we approve Ordinance 29, Series 2018, an ordinance for the City of Canyon City, amending certain water rate schedules set forth in Canyon City, or the city's water code relative to water service provided by the Canyon City Water Department, a Water Activity Enterprise.
Second.
Second, Ms. Cochran. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Harquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Thank you again. Okay. The next one is number 10, Consideration Municipal Code Update Pertaining to Increase the Base Rate Used to Calculate the Stormwater Management Fee, Ordinance 30, Series 2018, for introduction and first reading by title, bless you, only entitled, in ordinance, in ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, increasing the base rate used to calculate stormwater management fees chargeable by the City Stormwater Utility Enterprise. Would you care to comment, Mr. Administrator?
Yes. Unlike the most recent rate you increased by 3%, this is much larger. The stormwater rate historically was set at a level just to meet the compliance requirements of the federal government on pollution control, doesn't, didn't really address flooding issues, and certainly not the $75 million, and that doesn't even include Dawson Ranch, because they weren't around when this list was prepared, $75 million in proposed stormwater capital improvements to address and, and mitigate flooding in this city. So this is approximately a 45% increase to the base rate. For the average resident, that represents about a $4.23 increase monthly. For the average business, it's $21.79. Now, Dennis had some valid points as it relates to property tax, but on the issue of stormwater, the, the fee we charge is equal, because it's based on impervious surface. Has nothing to do with the Gallagher Amendment, which establishes a much lower rate for taxation of residential property and commercial. Everyone here pays the same cost per impervious square foot of property, whether that be a driveway or a roof, so it's apples to apples as far as benefits and costs. So that's why the commercial businesses pay more, because they simply have much more impervious surface. For example, the average commercial business in the city has 19,000 feet of impervious surface. Typically, that's parking lots, driveways, roofs. By comparison, the average residential property has roughly 3,600 square feet, so much smaller. So that's why the fee is less. But to that end, this is required in order just to meet the principal and interest costs related to this proposed $8 million in capital infusion you're about to engage in, to begin to address that $75 million backlog of capital needs in stormwater.
Okay. Any comments?
I would like to make a comment. Catherine, could you re-mail some of those old memorandums that were given to address? Some, Dennis had some of these conversations before when he was on council to, you know, have the residents help pay some of the commercial costs? And there's some legal issues with that that may not stand up in court.
Yeah, and the, the basic issue is, is that it could be interpreted as a tax, and that'd be subject to tabor, because the difference between a fee and tax is established in a Colorado law, and the memo walks you through that, so I can send those...
I think it'd be proper, since we have so many newer members that haven't had an opportunity for that to see that.
Well, that really, what, what Tony had said really makes sense, because I have a lot more square foot, square footage of impervious surface.
Good example, your house and your business.
Yeah, on my business than I do on my home. So that makes a lot more sense.
Mr. Meisner?
In defense of, I got two issues, not issues, but points. In defense of Dennis, one of, one of the commercial points is, is that many, many cases that are required to provide hard surface. They're then, from one interpretation, penalized for that hard surface that they were required to put in. And then, and in some cases, they're required to have some kind of a, of a runoff or storage on that, on that property. And then their other issue is, is that they're not given a break for having that storage. The point is, somebody could build a lot and have a retention pond on the lot and have absolutely no runoff that would impact the storm system, but they would pay the same exact rates. I'm not here to argue that point either way, but that's one of the points that comes in from the commercial end. To educate council, we seriously considered this, some form of rate increase last year for the budget. Because we had elected to move forward with the, the water rate increase, I believe it was council's intent at that point to say, we're going to postpone this so that we're not hitting them twice, and until we gather more information, we're going to put it off until April and then what have you. So ideally, this rate increase would have happened last year, and all we would be doing is some kind of a supplemental increase.
Right. And as to requiring businesses to have parking lots, there is an option for businesses where they can have an environmental-friendly parking lot that soaks in rainwater, and that would not be considered impervious surface, and they would not be charged stormwater fee for that. So that is an option. If you wanted to create a parking lot that was environmentally friendly to soak in stormwater, that is an option to have. Probably not viable for Walmart, but for smaller businesses.
Somebody did that here.
Yeah. Environmental alternatives did that. If you go by, it used to be an environmental alternative, so I think it's Colorado Legacy Land now. But that parking lot, they, it's about five parking spaces. That's not impervious surface, it is a parking lot.
Yeah. Use pavers with grass.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have something just really minor.
Yes, ma'am.
And Harry can kind of guide me with what he wants, but I, he explained to me that perhaps the whereas is not accurate in the ordinance, and I think he might be proposing some changes to clarify why the increase is occurring. Is that...
That is correct.
Okay. And can you kind of explain what the changes you...
I think the purpose of this increase is for, to reap, to cover the services cost for the debt, debt service payment. Instead of this paragraph on the where have says, this is the inflationary increase, so we need to change the language that, what our intention is, rather than inflationary.
Mr. Meisner?
I don't know that I, I understood that the process was, is that we came up with a rate increase, and then we came up with an alternative plan for the COP.
No. We came up with a plan to address our stormwater backlog, looking at what was affordable to most people, tried to keep it reasonable, like I mentioned, the residential rates, just over $4 a month, commercial 21. Then we backed into the $8 million, which was doable, and then that triggered the rate increase.
Rate increase is only covering the debt service payment, and nothing else.
Don't tell me that.
Yeah. But remember, historically, the rate has been purposely set since, I think, 2004, only to meet federal compliance with pollution regulations. It has not addressed mitigating flooding in the city. This is the first concrete effort to actually achieve that end, which we hear over and over is a priority of this community to address stormwater flooding damage to both property and the community as a whole.
So, so Harry's suggesting that we change the first whereas, which is the justification for the rate increase?
Correct.
Yeah, that, that would make sense. That's what it is.
Yes.
To just more accurately reflect what you're doing, so.
So what's our next step, then? Do we need to come back with new language and then...
No, you can approve it on first reading, subject to that amendment. It'll come back amended to you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a shout-out to the county that we are still looking for a regional solution to address stormwater, that we know that this stormwater increase or the COPs is not the end-all to address our needs. We need to have a regional approach that is fair and equitable to everyone that's in Canyon City urban area, and that we need to still keep looking for solutions that will benefit everybody for the long term.
Mr. Meisner?
And to add to that, well, the point, one of my points was suggesting that we move forward with a rate increase is because we're not getting any progress with the, with the... forward with the rate increases because we're not getting any progress with the larger district, and we've got to do something. We just can't sit here and complain about it. We've got to do something. I would support a rate increase, but I'm not going to support a rate increase that supports COPs.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 30, Series of 2018 for introduction and first reading with subject to the whereas amendment.
Second.
Does everybody understand that motion? Any discussion on that?
Dolly, you seconded, right?
Dolly seconded, right. Okay. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Well, you know, that has come up now that it's over, is that we talked about prepayment quickly, and we had talked about the possibility of to set a base and then anything over that income that would be earned would go to pay down the COP. Which I'm saying is if, let's just say, one of the issues passes out there, we'll be getting more tourism dollars, and the increase caused by that would be to pay down on the COPs.
And a conversation that I had had with Tony is, you know, we're spending a lot in cleanup, and if we can target those areas that are costing us so much money in cleanup and get those problem areas fixed, that money that we're not spending in cleanup could in turn go to paying the COPs off quicker, which is a high priority of mine. But I can only speak for myself.
You're right, Ms. Cochran, and I think that it is the mode of this council that that's what we want to do. We're just going to pay this off quicker.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, any increase in revenues as a result of 2A passing or re-increases in sales tax cannot be used to pay off the COP because those are different funds. The COP has to be paid off from enterprise revenues only, cannot be used from general fund. Correct?
I mean, general fund dollars have actually subsidized the stormwater fund.
I realize that, but that's through the justification of the expenses associated with stormwater, not a direct transfer payment.
Yeah, I mean, generally, you want it to be a self-sufficient fund, pay its own way through its fees.
Legally, it has to be, correct?
No, you could transfer, again, city out of history, we've made some adjustments in capturing through the transfer fee, the cost of the general fund subsidizing the stormwater fund. That's why there was a big increase, went from a couple hundred thousand to almost 700,000 last year because of our analysis. So technically, that didn't mean you were wrong in the past, just that's not a prudent policy, so it doesn't mean you couldn't do that in the future from a legal standpoint, just not a prudent business practice to subsidize your enterprise funds with general fund dollars. That's all.
I thought you told us at the time.
That was not the way it was presented.
Yeah, it was presented that we would be in trouble with tabor if we didn't do that.
Well, there's a threshold that if you exceed, and which we were probably approaching that because, I mean, we basically were only capturing about a third of what the general fund was providing the stormwater fund. That was corrected with the analysis by our consultants, so hopefully we don't return to that past.
The way that I look at this is that we're, the COPs encumber city assets and that any city fund, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but any city fund, any of our general funds can be used to unencumber those assets.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, I mean, there are many cities, because stormwater fees are so controversial, they don't charge stormwater fees, they subsidize it completely through the general fund via property tax or sales taxes. So it's clearly legal, but if you establish a separate enterprise fund, it's prudent to generate the revenue through the fees. But historically, we did not do that.
I'm just going to reiterate that that has not been what has been communicated to council in the past, in my belief.
I'm ready to move forward.
I think we need to move forward, too.
Okay. Where are we at? Okay, let's move forward. Number 11, Sales Offices in Residential Areas, suggested amendment to, they're suggesting an amendment to Title 17 to accommodate a sales center in the PDD Planned Development District and PUD Plan Unit Development Districts. Could you discuss that, Mr. Administrator?
I'll let Dina address this.
Yes.
She's waited all evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I could have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is one of those situations where an acute situation comes up that alerts us to one of the deficiencies in our current codes, and so the issue is simply that, like many communities have, you know, master planned communities or greenfield development versus brownfield development, meaning raw land being developed, in this case, Four Mile, where the code doesn't really accommodate a sales office and a sales office that's not within a model home. And so basically, what we are looking for direction on is to be able to take an amendment through the process within Title 17, to amend Title 17 to allow for a sales office in the PUD Planned Unit Development or the PDD districts within the city to allow for a sales offices. So that's the draft language that's put forward to you this evening. If you desire to move forward with that, we would take it to Planning Commission at the November Planning Commission meeting, and then it would come forward to council for adoption.
I did have, I worked that area, too, and the covenants talk about a temporary sales office. I take it, then, that the city coding supersedes the covenants.
So as far as I understand, staff's review of the covenants, meaning when the PDD was approved for Four Mile, there was no accommodation for a sales office. There was a specific accommodation made at the time for the temporary structure for the golf course that was separate than allowing for a sales office generally within our code or as far as staff's review was within the covenants when the PDD for Four Mile was established.
Well, I do have a copy of that. It does not specifically say that. It talks about temporary sales structure.
So if you could provide that to us, that would be, yeah, that'd be great.
I have it. I have a long history with that place, but this makes sense because no one in this day and age is going to build a spec house and then use that totally for a sales office. Economically, it's suicide.
Probably in the Canyon context, correct?
Right, and so, this is needed, period. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to say, as I understand, and let me rephrase this, there, we have a member of our city that wishes to do something that they cannot currently do under the current code, and our city staff is changing, suggesting that we change the code to allow a reasonable use and a reasonable outcome in the case, and thank you.
I do have a question pursuant to that because there is someone who needs this opportunity, but this process is going to take a really long time.
Yeah.
To amend the code.
Is it going to take a while?
Our suggestion would be based upon the will of the council that we would proceed to approve that and let the paperwork catch up, that the intent of the council is to approve it, but not to penalize the business for what will probably take at least two months to bring back to you. If that's okay, that's what we intended to do, give them the green light after tonight.
Yes, sir.
I intend to be business-friendly.
Okay, well, let's start with Ms. Turner, and let's go through and see what everybody thinks.
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do that. Though, I just had one, there's just one typo in the red language on paragraph D where it says, "The allowed time period shall not to exceed." I think they should just say, "Shall not exceed."
Yep, we'll correct that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
Would this also allow for a temporary sales office at the potential PUD that would exist up on 7th?
Yes. Yes, because we're proposing it to be.
Interversely applied to a PUD.
PUD or PDD.
Yeah, it was crafted so it would not, for example, impact, let's say, there was a development in Dawson Ranch with two homes, they wouldn't be permitted to have a trailer. It was intended for larger-scale residential subdivision development, which would traditionally fall under PUD or, in this case, a PDD, which is Four Miles, which has the capacity, as you well know, for well over 1,000 homes. Just makes more sense for larger developments.
At 7th is going to be a PUD.
PUD, yes.
And would qualify.
That would qualify, yeah.
Hammerick?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Smith?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Cochran?
I just have a quick question, and I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. Does it specify that it's strictly sales office and you can't live in it, or is that not specified in there?
So, well, the proposed language, so adding a new D, would specifically get to a sales center. There is a different section in the current code that's, which was included in the staff report that talks about the approving of a mobile home or RV for temporary living.
And I think that's what I was reading, is the language that exists in Title 17 specifies that it's strictly a business, and it says that you basically cannot use it as a residence. And I just want to make sure that that language carries, if we're changing, that it's not, you know, he's not going to be sleeping in it and living in it at night and selling homes during the day.
Right.
If you add, if you added exclusively before, used as, in between there, would that address your concerns? Where it says, "May be used exclusively as a sales center."
Yes.
Is that workable?
Mm-hmm.
Good point.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Ms. Gonzalez?
Dean, I just want to commend you for seeing a need in our community for the business owners and for searching ways to amend the current code. So for me, it's a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hockes? That's a hands up.
I got no questions.
It sounds like it's unanimous, Dean, that we should go forward with that.
Okay.
And allow them to do their sales office.
Public comment?
Get them rolling.
What? Yes, get those homes sold.
Again, I want to commend staff. I mean, I'm one of the first council people to point out some of our lack of customer service, but these are the types of things that we proactively need to do that I appreciate. Thank you.
We can bring a lot more next year.
That'll work.
If they help, absolutely.
We like that. Okay, thank you, Dean. I appreciate it. All right, let's move on to the Western Gateway sign. Can we say that, a political boundary?
Yeah, real simply, you know, we've.
I'm joking, by the way.
We've had several discussions with council. You gave us a general direction on where you wanted your two monument signs, on the east and west side of the city, roughly at our political boundaries. This particular one that you establish is as you entered the city near the community college, but with the recent acquisition of the site next door to us, and there's also the possibility of Veterans Park and property across the street that we could negotiate with the train, we just wanted to bring to your attention the opportunity to maybe reconsider the location of that monument sign, whether you want it closer to the physical entry of the city rather than the political boundary of the city. Because where it's currently going to be located is probably a good mile away from your sense of arrival, so we just wanted to double-check before we spent a lot of money in locating it there and getting all the necessary approvals, whether you had a change of mind, given our recent acquisition on the corner here, if you want to have it moved there.
So I was having a conversation with Caitlin about this, and we both kind of had realized that the sign that we chose to go out there was designed to go over a riverwalk.
Yeah, or the trail, the bike trail.
The bike trail. So how, if we were to relocate this sign?
We would have to slightly modify the design.
So we would have to take it back?
Well, working with Dean and the consultants, I don't think it would be an arduous process, but to modify it so if, for example, it's going to be on the property next door, to modify it to be appropriate for that site and also include parking.
Would there be an increased cost associated with that?
Marginal. Most of the work is done.
And how about timing?
Well, we've already taken a lot of time. Now it's a question, do we want to do it right or do it fast? We've taken a lot of time on this, so we just thought, because it was a small window of opportunity to reconsider, that we'd bring it to your attention. We didn't want to put it out there and then you tell us, oh, my goodness, why didn't we put it over here? So if that was the reason, we brought this forward. We're fine with the decision you've made, but given the fact you're now on property right here at a critical intersection of the city, we want you to at least consider that.
So that's what's changed, was just the purchase of the property?
Yes.
Okay, so if by chance we were to see about putting it at Veterans Park, removing the current sign that's there?
Mm-hmm. That's an option.
Would we have to remove some trees?
I don't believe so. If you know, that sign is quite a distance from trees. There's some overhang, you know, away from it, but there's no trees that would have to be displaced.
Okay.
Is there, relative to that question, is there not room right at the corner of First and Highway 50 on the southeast corner?
That would have to negotiate with the train. They own an easement there, and I think I've talked to the owners of the train.
Not southwest, southeast.
Southeast.
Which would be the corner of Veterans Park. Is that ours?
Right. I mean, the constraint there is the ditch comes really close to the intersection, so it's just a virtue of how close could a sign be placed to the intersection that accommodates the existing ditch.
Looks like there's room for a sign there. The ditch could go where the bike path could go.
I think ditch, you probably move the ditch for us, don't you think?
I personally like the idea of having it in Veterans Park because it's a maintained, beautiful, green space. You know, we don't have anything really ready at Gus's, and we don't really have a timeframe of when Gus's will be ready, and Gus's is on the opposite side. As you're coming into Canyon, it's kind of on the wrong side for cars to kind of see it coming in. Veterans Park is on that right-hand side. When you're coming in, it's easy to see and it's maintained all the time.
But I do like our design that we had for the west, so I'd like to keep that.
See, I wasn't here for that, so I don't know what.
We spent a lot of time on it.
And it's unique and it's different and it's special, and I think it's photographable if you have, you know.
Yeah, we think it's a gorgeous sign and location, but just wanted you to.
But I do want something special at Gus's, too, though, even if it was a.
It'll be a district sign, and Dina can talk to you about that.
Something that's beautiful and represents our city well.
So just to remind folks and make sure everybody is aware that, and this was in the memo, the staff report, that there are different types of signs and different sizes of signs. So what's considered a political boundary sign, which is a technical term by CDOT because we're placing these signs adjacent to the right-of-way, those political boundary signs, and they're specifically type four, based on their design manual, is the one that we're currently considering, basically a half-mile south of the existing city boundary on the west side, so near the community college campus. So that's considered a political boundary sign. That particular sign can be up to a certain square footage and size based on that sign type. The staff report references the kind of district monuments that we also envisioned to be put into place. Those district monuments are meant to be more à la the eastern gateway political boundary sign, meaning the low-to-the-ground monument sign. So the scaled-down versions of those are already envisioned in terms of the long-term build-out of the signage, and there would be one ideally at that intersection of First and RGB, and then the second one would be at 15th to replace the existing sign at 15th coming in from the west. So right now, it's envisioned that at some point, those district boundary signs that are a scaled-down version of the eastern political boundary sign would occur at First and 15th. And so if council would choose, for example, to, at least in the shorter term, re- And so if council would choose, for example, to, at least in the shorter term, replace the political boundary sign on the west side with the district gateway monument, from a cost standpoint, obviously that sign would cost less, because it'd be much smaller in scale.
Mr. Meisner?
But, did I interpret you to say that we technically could not take the western political boundary sign and move it to First Street?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that exactly. So I mean, there's two, two questions there. One, one is a question for CDOT, you know, would CDOT allow us to put what's technically called a political boundary sign of that scale, meaning sign type, up to 150 square feet in that location? We don't know the answer to that yet. My guess is it would have to be something scaled smaller.
Okay.
The second question would be, would you want it, if you're moving a sign to the intersection of First and RGB, would you want it to be a version of, or the exact version of what's envisioned for the western political boundary sign, or would you want it to be that lower-to-the-ground district monument sign, design?
You're saying, fundamentally. Does everybody understand what you're saying? There's two styles of signs.
I thought you chose the one with the arch.
And they're, they have the example here.
With the arch or without the arch?
With, I thought.
There's the low one.
Yeah, it's supposed to look like the bridge.
So to clarify that, Deana, you're talking about on page two of our presentation?
Right, so in page two of the, of the staff report or the memo, the top graphic there is the illustrative of the scaled-down version of what was approved as the eastern political boundary sign. And those in that format, the low-to-the-ground monument, is what's currently envisioned at First and 15th. And it would be a scaled-down version of what would be, what is being designed for the eastern political boundary sign, whereas council had approved a different design, the more vertical pylons, for the western political boundary sign, basically because of the topography in that location, and the fact that the grade of US 50 sits a little bit higher than where, you know, the current trail is, and so we wanted something to be a little bit more visible, and so that design is envisioned to be the vertical pylon component with, with the bridge.
And I really like it. I did, too. Do you happen to remember the dimensions of one sign?
The dimensions of all of the signs are changing weekly.
Okay.
We're, we're going back and forth with the consultant on upsizing the political boundary signs to be readable, and they've just come back now, and they've actually proposed some modifications in sizes to some of the other signs, so staff continues to review that, and so the sign type keeps, keeps getting modified.
Clearly, the two major signs are these political boundary signs. Those are the mothership signs, as you enter the city, from each direction. So if you're fine with, with the location that you proved, that's great. We just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any second thoughts, given the recent acquisition of this property right here, or Veterans Park. We just wanted to make sure that we were still in the right place.
Mr. Meisner?
Well, my other concern is, I realize we don't have a specific plan for the Gus property. There's a possibility, as with any other property acquisition that we would make, we're acquiring those properties to ensure that they're developed in accordance with some of our plans. There could be an opportunity in six months for the Gus property, that we would say, we're going to sell that to an independent developer, and they may not want that sign there. So we need to at least consider that.
That's true.
We're not necessarily acquiring that Gus property to develop it.
Caitlin? Ms. Turner?
I really like the sign we developed. We have given this a lot of thought and attention already, and I guess, you know, when we take time and vote on something and all agree, I guess I don't know why we're reconsidering even.
Just location, location and.
Yeah, but if we move the sign to these other locations, we're going to have to change the design, because it's been designed to go over the Riverwalk. We can't put the design that we chose in Veterans Park, so, and I don't think we want it, I just, we've spent money on this design, and man, we really, I think, went around the tree several times, coming up with a decision that we all felt comfortable with. So I'd prefer just to keep the plan we already had in place.
I prefer the same.
So I just have one point to make. I think as, as Canyon City develops and grows, that area might be a point of interest. You know, there, there might be development that, that happens out in that area, and eventually, you know.
It could be your sense of arrival.
It could be your sense of arrival, because we've, we've grown that far. That may take tens, decades, you never know. But as we develop and grow, I think we can add signs, like Deana was saying, district signs, that will make sense. So I prefer to keep it where it is.
All right.
Because I like the sign.
Shall we start going around? Start with Jacquez?
I wasn't here when you guys picked the design for the sign, but hey, whatever you guys decide, I'm okay with it.
It's going to look good.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I'm, I'm for keeping it where it is.
Okay, Ms. Cochran?
I'm with Frank. I was not here when all of this was discussed, kind of unrelated. I would like to see a more visible kind of updated sign in Veterans Park, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the one that's been created for somewhere else.
We talked about that, too, and I think that's going to come in later budgets, when we have our other signs that we're going to add.
Ms. Smith?
Keep it words at.
Keep it words at.
Where it's at.
I didn't get to vote, it was my comment.
He's allowed to give a thumbs up, Jim.
That's right.
Keep the words at.
Yeah, I'm the same.
Okay. Thank you all for bringing that out. We appreciate that, and, all right. Any comments from our city administrator? Any report? Okay, then, we're adjourned.